We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Pastor James Jones of the Taterville Christian Church. Pastor?
Let's pray together. God, we're so thankful tonight for the opportunity to come together and talk about the business of this community, this city. We're thankful for the city that we live in, we're thankful for its inhabitants, we're thankful for these men who have been elected to lead, and we pray that you'll provide for them and for each one present your guidance, your wisdom, and your insight. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Here.
Sean Burdell.
Here.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Here.
Rob Heberling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Martin Vota.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Seven aldermen present, one absent. Okay, the first thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearing listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Designation. Alderman Dorcheness, second by Alderman Jones, discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the regular meeting held May 19th, 2014, minutes of the public hearing held May 22nd, 2014, minutes of the special council meeting held May 22nd, 2014, minutes of the Street and Sewer Committee meeting that was held May 22nd, 2014, and minutes of the Public Facilities Committee meeting held May 22nd, 2014. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Alderman Burdell, second by Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, before we get started here, I think all of us probably know someone who has suffered as a result of cancer, whether it be a family member or a friend. What I'd like to do tonight is, I've got Lisa Sims here with us, on behalf of a new program they've got called Paint the Town Purple, and I've got a proclamation she asked me to read here. Paint the Town Purple, American Cancer Society Paint the Town Purple Proclamation for Christian County. Whereas Paint the Town Purple is an activity of the American Cancer Society that promotes cancer awareness, gives individuals and communities an opportunity to fight back against the cancer, and whereas money raised during Paint the Town Purple of Christian County supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, by helping people get well, by finding cancer, cures for cancer, and by fighting back. And whereas the American Cancer Society funded more than $160 million in cancer research last year through money raised in communities across the United States. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Greg Brotherton, Mayor of Taterville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim June 1st through June 7th, 2014, as Paint the Town Purple Days in Taylormville, and I encourage citizens and businesses to help finish the fight against cancer and to help spread a message by participating in Paint the Town Purple activities through June 1st through June 7th. So, Lisa, do you want to say anything?
I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to come here tonight and receive that. Paint the Town Purple is an extension also of Relay for Life of Christian County that will be at the high school this year, the Taylorm High School, June 27th from 6:00 PM until 6:00 AM on the 28th. It's a 12-hour overnight fundraising activity to raise funds and awareness for cancer. Cancer doesn't sleep, and neither do we. I'm proudly representative of this community and of Christian County. Our county turned in over $100,000 last year through the American Cancer Society. So, as all over Illinois, I am up in Chicago a lot, and they call us the little county that could. We are one of the smaller communities, and just the heart involved in Christian County and the money that we turn in, it blows them all away. So, thank you guys for this opportunity, and we hope that Paint the Town Purple will get more and more businesses and other, I guess, people and families involved with this as well. So, thank you.
Okay, next, I'm going to ask Mr. Hauser of the Planning and Zoning Commission to please report to the council.
Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen, the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the location map and final plat for the William L. Hager First Edition Avenue Minor Subdivision. And the, there was, it was recommended, by the way, that by our city engineer, Mr. Green, and there seemed to be no one in opposition to this as well. So, as a result of all of that, the Planning and Zoning Commission received a motion to grant variance for sidewalks in the, along Valhaver Drive, which it is a rural subdivision. So, you may want to recommend the approval of that to the city council.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the variance. Okay, Alderman Dorcheness, second by Alderman Burdell, discussion or comment regarding the variance for the sidewalks? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, there was, thank you, there was another motion made to approve the submitted location map and final plat for that particular subdivision, and the Planning and Zoning Commission saw that to recommend approval of those two items to the city council.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Burdell, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
After the only motion dropped, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be promptly adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have an ordinance ascertaining the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed on public works of the city of Taylormville.
Would you like to make that motion, Your Honor?
Alderman Jones, you got a second? Alderman Bud, discussion or comment?
Comment.
Alderman Heberling.
Last year, I voted against this, knowing that it's something that needs to be done, but if you go through the schedule of wages on there, and this has been something that was put together back in 1941, I really think it's time for the entity that's responsible for this to review the wages that are paid out. We actually have operating engineers getting paid less than some laborers in certain positions. Not that the laborers don't deserve it, and not that the engineers have to get paid more, but they're just in, there's discrepancies in here, and I just think it's, they need to straighten it out. And then also, this prevailing wage adds 17, 18, 22% onto the cost of these projects that we're doing in our community. We just did over $10 million worth of stormwater work in our community. If you would have taken this cost off, it's possible that we'd have over $2 million more today to play with, not to play with, to use in a constructive way that we did not have because of prevailing wages. It is something that is just limiting our efforts to serve our community, so I wish that we could address it in some way. I know we can't, but I'll be ready now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes six in favor, one against. Okay, next we have, you know, I think it's every six months or so that we review the closed session minutes, and I did that. I believe I found one additional one, I believe she sent copies to everyone, but unless someone's got a different thought, I'd entertain a motion to approve my recommendation regarding the closed session minutes.
I will make that motion.
Alderman Heberling, you got a second?
Second.
Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next item, we have a request to bid an office level two position and/or advertise for an office level one position for the treasurer's office.
I'd like to make that motion with the comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, can I get a second for discussion?
Second.
Alderman Bud, go ahead, Alderman Heberling.
For purposes of timing, we did not have this on the agenda for this coming Thursday night's personnel committee meeting, just so that we could start getting some movement on this. As you're all aware from a memo dated March, I'm sorry, May the 16th, that Valerie Miles was awarded the full-time airport clerk position, and it is her position that we are filling with this bid and/or advertise. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next we have a request regarding summer help for a high school or college student for the front desk in the treasurer's office.
I'd like to make that motion with the comment.
Okay, can I get a second?
Sorry.
Second, Alderman Burdell, go ahead with the comment, Alderman Burdell, I mean, Heberling, excuse me.
Oh, I will excuse that. It depends on which day it is, I think, Sean. Because of some of the turnover and especially this bid that was awarded a couple of weeks ago, we just need some short-term help down in the treasurer's office, and the treasurer thinks that if we could get a high school student or a college student in, that would take us through the mid, end of August, that that would help us get through the summer down there.
Alderman Walters.
I respectfully disagree with that. I think with the changes that we know are happening and the anticipate the changes that we know, I would prefer personally, I mean, you're quite often, I know what happens down there, that is a busy office, that I would prefer that we all be put on a full-time person right now. If we're going to train a person, we're going to be training a college or a high school student that's going to be there for maybe two months at the longest, and we're going to spend an effort and time to train that person, why not put that effort and time forth with, because we know eventually we're going to be putting a full-time person on there. I would prefer to spend the time and the effort and money to hire a full-time person than to get that person entrenched in the office now. So, I can't support a summer college student down there. That office has a good reputation, they deal very well with the public, and I don't want to lose that capability down there with some type of summer part-time help that's in there. So, I can't support a summer high school, college student that's going to be there maybe six weeks at the most. I would prefer that we put a full-time person on there now.
Alderman Heberling.
Thank you very much. We in the past have used some short-term temporary help for just this position, and it has really worked out quite well. The public has been well-served, and with the vacancy that Ms. Miles, with her leaving, creates, there's going to be enough training going on without having an additional body in there that we're going to be training for a full-time position. So, I continue to support my motion to put a temporary person at the front desk for the summer. Thank you.
Alderman Jones.
Not that a high school kid can't be mature or worldly in the fact that they can handle pressure, but that office and that position can see some high-rate customers, especially with the water rate increases that are coming. So, rather than someone in high school, I'd much rather see college or someone who could come in for a part-time that has a little bit of experience handling people, because customer service has always been one of the things that we pride ourselves in that office, and that's what I would rather see than a high school kid. That's my opinion, I don't want to have to change the motion, but I would hope that you would take that into your advisement.
Any other comments? Alderman Coontz.
Just piggybacking on Mr. Jones's comment, I would prefer to add in there, especially if you can't find the right person under the high school, college, you know, level that you prefer to have, to have a more professional temp person in there. We've had some in the past there, I don't know if you want to use some of those from the past that you've already used, but I'd like to see something added in there to use maybe just a professional temporary service type person that we've used already.
Any other comments before we go? Alderman Walters.
Also, my fellow aldermen, though that I'm in here quite often, as said, Paul, because I choose to be here, and that position is a lot more than just collecting money. There's a lot more to it than just sitting there and saying, "Hi, Mrs. Smith, I'll take your money." It's an important position, and that's why, again, I stand with my previous statement that I would prefer to have a full-time person hired starting that office.
And I can certainly understand that. I think the problem is that we're going to have a body short already, so you don't have that extra body to train somebody. So, if you actually got somebody busy training during that same session, same time period, you're not really gaining a whole lot for the temporary. Alderman Dorcheness.
I would look to the treasurer and ask her, what's her opinion? I mean, I would think that a temporary person could handle that job on the front end. I don't know how many times, I'm not in here every day like Mr. Walters is, but I don't, I just wondered how many times that you have conflict at that window, that person, somebody that is experienced in the office couldn't deal with a customer like that.
Well, let me start with in 2005, when I was hired, I didn't start until August, and we did have a summer help in at that time before I started in August. She worked there a couple of years, then the following, maybe my third year there, we did have another college person at the front window. If there is any conflict, of course, there, the two staff I have in there would be able to help with that, or I would also be available if there's any conflict at the window. The reason why I'm requesting the summer help is Valerie has until June 30th to...
Change your mind.
Change her mind, or if she's not in the job, then she obviously would have to come back. If she stays out there, the, I do have one person I believe in the office that would bid that two position, and if that's the case, I would leave the front window open, which means that then both of the staff that are in there now would be busy, and the front window, we would just need somebody up there just to take the money, process the payments, wait on the customers with starting orders. So, that's the reason why I'm requesting the summer help. So, it's basically getting through all the bid processes to, then after, if the office two position fills and Valerie's spot, I have to wait another 30 days for that person to prove that she can do or he can do the job, then I can look into hiring a full-time for the front window.
Alderman Walters.
One final comment I wanted to make, I have a good relationship with our C. S. R. A. R., some of my comments I hope are taken with the spirit that I need. I support that office, and I still stand strong on my position, that I would prefer to have a full-time person.
You're not saying you feel strongly in both ways, are you? Okay. Let's stay on track here. Alderman Coontz.
For you, Jack. You have various temporary people covering for various reasons, not college or high school students, but adult temporary help. Are any of those past recent people ones that you would take in consideration as well, possibly, or are you strictly just one, a high school, college person, or would you prefer, you know, a regular temporary?
I think a college person would do a good job in there. One reason is the cost.
We did discuss.
For it's temporary, you're paying the money for that, because you have to pay the agency, and a college kid would be around eight, fifty, eight, twenty-five an hour.
So, you're comfortable with that?
Okay. Any more comments before we go? Roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
No.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Brings you to the City Attorney Updates.
Gentlemen, I have four subject matters I'd like to discuss briefly with you this evening. The first of which is that the mayor and I met with George Calvert at your direction, about a week or so ago, if I'm not mistaken, to go over the three properties that you wanted to aggressively pursue, one of which is the property that's owned by ten unknown owners, we think. We have ordered the title policy work, it just came in last Thursday, I'll be drafting a letter for the mayor to send to the one property owner that we do know, to prepare their requisite affidavit as to who might be the heirs at law, or if he doesn't know where they're at and so forth, to give us the tool to file the lawsuit that we need to take some action on that property. Secondly, we also discussed the abandoned building ordinance to put the forms in place so that that can be implemented. I just handed the mayor this evening the application form for the registration permit, the enclosure permit, and for the approval of a building plan, and I noticed to register that George will be sending out to property owners, that would be the subject of those abandoned buildings. George is not here this evening, but if we can get him a copy, and I'll be happy to tweak it however you guys want to, but I think it's in fairly good shape. The other matter is, the third matter is, is that there was a meeting, I believe on May 29th, with the EPA, I. EPA on your airport project. I was initially invited to attend that meeting, but when it was discovered that they were not going to have their attorney, I was asked not to go, so I didn't, but the mayor did, and he did quite well. I think within two to three weeks, we should have some kind of response from EPA, and the mayor and I will be drafting a communication to you to get you up to date where we're at on that subject matter. I would say that I believe Mr. Laker attended that meeting, I understand, as well as Mr. Miracle, if I pronounce it Miracle, whatever his name is. He's no longer with CAM, but he offered his services to show, well, he wasn't invited, but he showed up, I'll put it that way.
There's no Miracle there, it's Miracle.
Miracle, all right. Finally, the last subject matter is, I've handed out to you tonight a document which is called a motion to cautious subpoena to S. T. K. M. and further relief. If you remember the last meeting, I think I was reporting to you that the city got served with a FOIA request, Freedom of Information request by a gentleman who's presently incarcerated, who presently is a subject, is a defendant in a case here for some criminal, serious criminal charges against him. And that went up to the Attorney General, I think I reported we filed a 78-page response. Then we got, the Attorney General came back and I think essentially agreed with us, but now that individual response, an opportunity to respond, as I read his response, it was basically, "I don't need to go further yet, we're going to file a lawsuit against the city," which we've not had that yet. Then after that, I got served with a subpoena as city attorney for similar kind of documents in conjunction with this criminal case, and then last Thursday, I got served with another Freedom of Information request, asking a whole bunch of other information, which you are under the gun for within five days to respond. So, I took it upon myself, and I think the subpoena I was served with was legally defective, and I pointed that out in my motion, I think the court agreed, and that was set for hearing today at 11 o'clock. The police chief was with me today, we argued it, and the bottom line we walked away with is that I think Mr. Shahada is agreed on the record to withdraw his Freedom of Information request with prejudice, which he can't bring those back again against the city, which I would suggest that that would probably diffuse any idea of him trying to sue the city because of those, since they're going to be withdrawn, in exchange for which we are going to comply and furnish some records to the judge, who will review those, what we call in-camera, meaning that no one else sees them, they will be under seal. I will be suggesting to the court what I think should be redacted, personal information and things that would be exempt under Freedom of Information Act, and then the court will make a decision as to which of those records gets sent to the state's attorney's office and to the defense. And then, and if he, if there's any information that he says it shouldn't be, I think the court will enter an order as to the general idea, so they can object and do what they want. The whole sense of this was, was to try to quit getting, running in three different directions, run up a lot of different attorney fees, responding to this, it's been an enormous amount of time by the police department gathering these records and trying to respond to it. This is one avenue to try to, in one forum, let's get to the bottom of it, you know, we're not trying to thwart any evidence that you may have to defend yourself, but we can't, we don't want to be harassed continually and trying to get information that probably has nothing to do with a criminal case. So, that's what this was all about, and that's why I handed that out. So, if you can't sleep tonight, read it two or three times, I guarantee you, you will be sleep well. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions for the city attorney? All right, move on to mayor updates, just a couple of quick things here. First of all, the, we had the annual Memorial Day ceremony out there at Oak Hill Cemetery, and so, once again, I want to thank Bill Newberry and his crew for keeping that place looking sharp. Thanks goes out to Jim Smith and the municipal band, they do a great job out there every year. Thanks to Judge Ron Spears for his inspiring oratory that he provided, and for all the people out there who are responsible for placing and removing all those American flags. I mean, it's just an absolutely beautiful sight out there, we had a beautiful sunny day, and it just, it really does give you a special feeling out there to see that scene, but that does come with a lot of work, and so, if you ever get a chance and you need something to do about that time of year, help put those flags out, which is the easy part of it. Picking them up is tougher, because it just takes twice as long to pick them up and roll them up correctly and put them away, but I do want to thank those people that, you know, take hours out of their week to get those things put out there for us. This, let's see, actually, last week on May 24th was the birthday, the official birthday for the city of Taylormville, our 175th year. It was back in May 24th, 1839, when the town was located by a commission that was appointed by the legislator for that purpose. In honor of that, I was going to have Alderman Dorcheness sing Happy Birthday, but we are short on time, so we will keep moving. Okay. Now, this weekend at the Christian County Fairgrounds, we have the Ninth Annual Black Horse Powwow. It's going to be held Friday, June 6th through Sunday, June 8th, and it's, if you haven't been out there to that, it's something to see, something to enjoy, so if you've got kids, that's something that I think they would enjoy as well. Now, this one's a little special, because the mayor gets to do lots of things, and this Saturday night at 9:00, I get to go out there and introduce Mr. Fred Dubay, as he's going to perform his last Elvis Presley interpretation show. Now, he's been doing this for 40 years now, and all over the country and everything else, but he's, he's going to do his farewell performance in front of that group out there, and also it's going to be a tribute to his wife who passed away last year. It doesn't cost a cent, free parking and everything else, so if you need to spend a Saturday night somewhere and listen to some good Elvis, you know, that's the place to be. That's all I've got, unless anyone else has something. We'll move on to committee reports. Discussions and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. We'll start out with Street and Sewer Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. There were three motions that came out of the Street and Sewer Committee meeting. First motion is to approve the request of O'Reilly Auto Parts to close Lincoln Avenue from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Friday, June 20th, for the Third Annual O'Reilly Auto Parts Car Cruises. I do have their application for the special events.
Alderman Walters makes that motion, can I get a second? Second by Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
And that is to also approve their special event permit, correct?
Yes.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? That motion passes.
Second motion I want to make is to approve the request of the Optimus Club to solicit
funds at the corner of West Main Cross and Webster Street on Flag Day, June 14th, to help support the annual fireworks celebration, subject to approval of the special events permit. And we do have that.
Second by Alderman Burdell. Discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? That motion passes.
The last motion is to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance placing stop signs on Bithwell Street at Snodgrass. Second one to comment.
Second, Alderman Coontz, go ahead with your comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I stated in the committee, this, I believe, might have been brought up before, but with the transition of different city attorneys and just things going along, this might have fell through the cracks. And I appreciate Alderman Walters for bringing that back, helping bring that back to committee. Just want to move forward on that.
Any other comments?
Your Honor.
Alderman Walters.
Superintendent Wiseman and myself will be reviewing other needed and/or requested stop signs in that particular area.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we move to public facilities committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two motions out of that committee. First one, I'd like to make the motion to accept a quote of $5,650 from AAA Asbestos Service Incorporated to assemble the boiler to gain access to asbestos gasket material inside the firebox area, and to remove all boiler parts from the basement at City Hall.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Alderman Dorchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Second motion, I'd like to make the motion to accept a low estimate from lathe awning and upholstery for a canvas awning and installation for the police department back door at a cost of $980.
Second on that?
Second.
Heberling, discussion or comment?
Comment.
Alderman Burdell.
Alderman Dorchinez called me about this awning, and I went down and looked at it. Even though we put the awning up there, it appears to me that that top panel over that door is not correct. It needs to be out of the casing on that door. It looks like that's just an avenue for water to get down there. So I think the awning's a good idea, but I think that door still needs some work on that top panel up there. So if we had to the chairman of the facilities take a look at it and see, wouldn't take much to fix it, then look back to me, but it still needs some work there.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Alderman Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, next we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of $298,877.73.
Make that one, comment.
Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Burdell. Go ahead with your comment, Alderman Bud.
I would like to pull one bill from there, and it's for the University of Illinois for $825. And that brings the total to $297,982.73.
Okay.
And then, health insurance, $99,801.41. Healthcare tax, $3,070. Workers' comp, July, $26,698. Electric, $2,527.88. Garbage, $2,512.35. City directory, $1,395. Computer tech, $1,098.75. Salon equipment for mower deck and miscellaneous, $7,281.75. Altor for maintenance, $1,108. Wireless USA for siren repairs, $1,347.50. Walmart and Morons for miscellaneous supplies, $2,182.38. Blueville Garage for repairs, $1,186.81. PPI for materials, $4,850.50. Berry fertilizer, $1,559.58. Unique temporary help, $2,861.90. Police and fire uniform allowance, $1,659.09. Police Department for, police supply for ammo, $8,201.10. Street Department, Lewis March, $8,704.50. Phil Tullis, $27,197.70. Sewer Department, Vandevere Engineering for lift station maintenance, $16,047. Water Department for chemicals, $9,516.21. Airport, Aero Energy for fuel, $38,824.95. Loles paving, $7,254.71. Cemetery Department, City of Taylorville, 15% lot sale for Perpetual Care Fund, $5,806.50. Lake Department refunds, $1,050. Route 29 Customs for maintenance and T-shirts, $1,359.18. For a total on these of $284,874.75.
Any other questions?
I just have to call on one of the bills.
Alderman Dorchinez, go ahead.
I talked to Larry Bud earlier this evening. On page five, this is on the maintenance of the washer. I'm not saying that we should pull that bill or anything, they did the work. But I would recommend to the fire department, if you have any problems in the future, I don't want to fix anything, but give me a call. I'll give you some good advice, because I can't imagine how much that washing machine costs, brand new. And I'm not, I don't want to hold your feet to the fire. I'm just saying is that, I know they took it off premises. I've never heard of a washer ever leaving the house to be repaired. So anyway, just food for thought.
Any other comments? Alderman Bud, I guess I'd ask you to amend your motion to reflect the new dollar amount.
Yes.
$297,982.73. And Alderman Burdell, amend your second. Okay, roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Alderman Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we don't have this on the agenda, but I'd like to ask either Andy Goodall or Dave Oldham or both to please stand or, you know, come forward and let us know the status of the platform truck. Or, I'm sorry, I didn't see the chief come in. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I think for the record, you're doing that under your last paragraph on your agenda item.
Well, yeah, under any other matters.
Yes.
Before I opened it up to them, I wanted specifically, do I need to read that before they speak?
I think so.
Okay. You guys just...
Pardon me for the interruption.
Just control yourselves. I'm going to go ahead and read this paragraph.
Play along with me, will you please?
Okay. "Per sub-paragraph G of 5 ILCS 120/2.06, this portion of the city council meeting is reserved for any person wishing to address the council on any relevant subject matters concerning the city." This definitely concerns the city, so please address the council.
I mean, you heard the county clerk, you heard the chief, I guess, and share personally with me. As you guys hopefully know that we, the last day of the state proposal was in this Friday at 4:00 p.m., we have a meeting the first day at 9:00 this morning. Have you all got a copy of this letter? We have received five proposals. One of them initially was over the cost of $900,000 limit, so that proposal is immediately out because we have a limit of $900,000. The next one was, I need one proposal. In our preliminary specifications, we wanted a steel ladder versus an aluminum ladder. Well, this truck had an aluminum ladder. The reason we want steel versus aluminum is that aluminum heat, like we'd be around a fire up, cumulative, it's not the same as using steel, so that's one of the reasons why we want a steel ladder. So that's why that bid was discarded. The Ferrari, which is the third paragraph down, it was a nice choice, but there were some options on there. I gave you too many details that really weren't going to fit the needs of what we wanted for the city table. It really come down to the K and B and the Pierce. Both these trucks would be great trucks for us. We had over a list of 80 different items that we compared each truck to, and it really come down to five or three, one versus the other. But it ended up being the Pierce was the one that was chosen by the committee, a six-person committee, four to two, to recommend to, I guess it's going to be the committee on Thursday, that would be the apparatus we were looking for. It's going to best suit the needs for our city, and it's under the $900,000 limit that was set.
In the situation we have tonight, obviously, it's not an agenda item, so we can vote on it. We had a brief discussion before the meeting tonight with the city attorney, and it seems like the only thing we can do is maybe hold a short special city council meeting Thursday to take care of this issue. And in that way, we could approve it at that point. They'll give us 48 hours to get notice to the press, and...
The reason why we are saying that is that this truck is open for sale for any of the salesmen across the country, so it can still be bought out from underneath those. That's why it's important to have that short council meeting to give the mayor the authority to sign the contract to secure that truck, so we know that truck will be out. It's going to take a little while to get it here and get it cleaned up and get it lightered. You know, everything else it needs done, probably what, three weeks or a month later? Yeah, I could wait three to six days. I kind of wanted to put that in with your mom when it came, so I kind of timed it to try and coincide with your mom. That would, that's why we did that, so the council can secure that, otherwise it could be sold out by Monday.
Your Honor.
Alderman Walters.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I reviewed both of the platform trucks. There was a element that the platform actually lit up in the platforms. I had no fear of heights, I don't have a problem doing it again. And at the time, when I looked at both the trucks, I asked Dave Oldham to please provide me with the information on Pierce and the warranties. And I did read all the warranties on that vehicle. It has substantially good warranties, solid warranties. There are 23 separate warranties on various components for the platform truck. These are supplied by their respective manufacturers. The terms of each vary in length, as far as years, and also vary in some cases by vehicle mileage. There are also 11 separate certification documents that state that the platform truck meets certain NFPA standards or has passed specific tests. Some examples of the warranties, I've got five of them that I mentioned that I figured were hard to read. The chassis frame is warranted for 50 years. The aerial device for 20 years or 100,000 miles. The custom cab, 10 years or 100,000 miles. The apparatus body, 10 years or 100,000 miles. And the engine, five years or 100,000 miles. So, and the two that I reviewed, I also am in favor of the Pierce.
I guess I would ask, just kind of go down the line here, is there anyone that cannot make Thursday's meeting if we decide to hold a special city council meeting on Thursday? At 5:45 prior to the 6 o'clock? Alderman Jones.
Can you get us the specifics of the proposal before that meeting so that we can look over?
As far as you want to...
As far as what the truck is, what year it is, how many miles it has on it, how much time is left on the warranties, those types of things?
That would be, all the warranties start on 1/32. So all the warranties start the day we receive the truck. Even though it's a, is it 2012, 2013, sorry. 2013, the warranty starts until the day we pull the truck into station, and it's ours. So that's all that starts. Except in the mileage now, I can refer that to Mr. Goodall, because he didn't want something. We can try to get that due by Thursday.
Alderman Coontz.
I mentioned this a while back, but I think it's important to mention this again. When I was on Fire Explorer a long time ago, back in my early youth, we toured the Pierce manufacturing facility in Appleton, Wisconsin.